Hello, everybody. It's 4 o'clock. We're going to start our meeting. So we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Andrea, do you want to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to call for a public comment first. So if anybody here inside would like to make public comment, please state your name, address, and you have five minutes. You can step up to the podium.
Good afternoon, Tim Kelly. I know most of you have day jobs and limited time or energy to do much research, so I wanted to share some facts related to your hearing today. The biggest component by far of our school budget, as you probably know, is personnel expense. Salary and benefits represent over 80% of total cost. This proposed plan before you adds 13.5 more headcount into the school budget. The superintendent is, of course, correct in saying that if we bring people on board, then we have to pay them the contracted rate. In the past five years, Farmington Schools has added a total of 40 more employees with essentially the same enrollment. We seem to be in a pretty good band on enrollment, a couple dozen. Today, we employ 15 more FTEs, teachers, than we did five years ago, with the same pupil enrollment as we expect this coming fall. And we have 35 more FTEs than we did 10 years ago. This typically happens by, you know, adding a couple for every year, maybe S or 6 instead of 0 for 3, but it does add up. I can't go through all of this 40 and 5 minutes, but let me give you an example from this year's request. In the face of our stretched financial position, the School Department has announced that they plan to hire a new high school teacher to teach culinary skills, cooking class. They want to resurrect an old program that was deprioritized and closed over a decade ago. Now, we all went to high school and can understand why kids might rather, you know, bake brownies than take elective in comparative literature or computational fluid dynamics, but, you know, is that really our vision of the global citizen? And, you know, people who move into Farmington pay half a million dollars for an existing house, maybe over 750K for a new one. When they pay up for those homes, you know, is that what the parents are really prioritizing? I think we all know the likely answer. Next topic, director-level salary costs are projected up 50% year to year. This adds over half a million dollars to the budget. These are not people who teach in classrooms. In the past four years, we have increased our director coordinator headcount by 40% and are now asking for more. The superstructure in our school organization is getting a little heavy. By the way, almost half the employees of Farmington Schools are not certified FTEs. This new budget has a request for a manager of residency and security, along with another staff person as well. These people would be based at central office. Most of this person's job will be coordinating meetings and going to meetings. They will probably do strategy documents, PowerPoint presentations, and submit the monthly TPS report. This position is not going to make anyone safer. If anything, it risks diffusing responsibility in a very critical arena. There are two basic areas of school security. One is facility. We have an experienced facility director with a significant security budget. The other, obviously, is personnel. We have Farmington police officers dedicated to our schools. They're fully trained and armed, and also our security and hall monitors. And residency issues really need to be focused at the neighborhood school level, not in some central office building. Now, the average district in Connecticut spends 6% of their school budget on special ed, while Farmington School spends almost three times that percentage. Special ed is now the second-largest school we run. It begs a lot of questions.
One minute, Tim.
Yep. Clearly, this is not sustainable. We do have a new director in place, so hopefully he can get us a more sustainable path. At the same time, our private tuition payments are projected up by 20%, and private tutor costs up by 12%. So why are our private costs so high, given our significant multi-year investment in current people and programs within the system? The budget line for substitutes is up 20%. This certainly can't be due to wage increases. Custodial supplies are up 75%, almost $100,000. Sounds like we need to sharpen the pencils a little bit. COVID funds, you know, were for short-term, unique supply needs.
Thank you, Tim.
All right. Let me close. As you know, the world of education is full of acronyms like BCA and SAAL and S or 3. When you find yourself getting wrapped around the axle in some of these discussions, just go back to your three-category rubric, right? State requires, Farmington agrees. State not required, Farmington optional, and then state mandates that have no value to us.
Thank you.
Good luck in your deliberations.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else would like to come up and make comment, please?
Call first. My name is Liz Sanford. I live at 18 Mountain Road. I am here as both a resident and a proud Farmington Public School employee. I love working at Noah Wallace School. I've been doing it for 15 years, and there's not a lot of people who would come back 15 years to get a whopping $120 a day. That's what I get paid as a building substitute. And I would like to explain some of the things I do. People ask me what I do. I say, I do everything but drive the bus, cook lunch, and do major repairs. It's the easiest way to sum up my job. Today, I worked in a kindergarten class. I worked in a fourth-grade class. I provided one-on-one support with a struggling learner. I even had to be prepared to ensure that child and the rest of the children's safety. So I'm getting paid $120 a day to do that. Our schools are vitally important to this community. People move here because of our schools. It's on every billboard and piece of communication. We are a top-notch quality district that other towns wish to emulate. I fear that we will begin nipping away and carving out, and, oh, this really isn't important, or that's not a priority. Budgets are hard, I know. I live my own budget. But our children are our investment in the future. Our children are still recovering from the pandemic. Yes, I know people say, oh, that's cliche. Come and live in our district every day. The need for mental health services, the need for one-on-one para-support, our learners are struggling. And our goal is to make global citizens, and we are really good at that, but if we can't get kids to a place where they are available for learning, they cannot be successful, and we are failing them. I just feel so passionate about this. It's why I keep coming to work every day. And I just, I just really need, I really feel we need to maintain adequate funding for our children to be successful adults, because otherwise, who's going to pay our nursing home bills? So, thank you very much. Good luck with your discussions.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to make public comment, please? Nobody?
My name is Mark Simpson. I live at 12 Gillette Way, and I sat here last night listening to the discussions between the Town Council and the Board of Ed, and I would like to refresh your memory if you don't remember. I served on the Board of Ed 20 years ago. And 20 years ago, at this time, we had a situation where the Board of Ed accepted the superintendent's budget totally, no cuts, and we pressed it forward. Town Council had a different number. We had our number. And it got into this lockjaw jam where we kind of went at, you know, kind of trying to come up with the right number. It actually got a little more difficult than that. We went to the town meeting. At the town meeting, 300 citizens showed up, enough to have a vote. That vote overturned the Town Council budget, and then that new budget was proposed and went to referendum. It failed badly. It went to referendum again. It failed badly. Finally, I think our Board of Ed finally got a budget that was less than what the Town Council originally gave. What, you know, what I'm trying to say is, for you today, when you meet with the Town Council, open your mind. I know that you're at 3, you're at 6, but open your mind, because that didn't help the Board of Ed by digging your heels in and saying, as one of my members during those budget discussions said, "We need every single dime." Now, I don't think that's a true statement. I think it's a passionate statement. I think the superintendent's budget is what I expect to have. It is what I look at, it's what, in a perfect world, what is needed to run the schools. And if we could have that, that's what we need. That is what I expect in a budget. But as a Board of Ed, you have to make the correct decisions, how to adjust that budget to the point where it doesn't affect the kids, but it also doesn't affect the taxpayers of this town. And I have a little experience in that sense. I just resigned, you know, just as I decided not to rerun, I was on the tax assessment appeals. Last year, we had overwhelming hearings that we had to hear after revow. I can't tell you how many people came who would never see them, but they were in desperate straits, and they wanted to have their tax assessment reduced. Otherwise, they didn't know what they're going to do. Looking at the capital budget for the next few years, four elementary schools going to have their HVAC systems replaced, there's a lot of capital expenditures going on in the future. I don't know how you're going to be able to balance the budget without smacking the town people with another tax increase like they received last year, even though you guys did an incredible job putting it down to zero as much as you could, but you couldn't solve the problem of revaluation in people's houses going up in value. So basically, you know, you might say, well, it's just another one of these old senior citizens complaining and everything, but my family is all about education. My wife's an elementary school principal, retired. My daughter's an elementary school teacher, still working in Delaware, and my son is a teacher's military justice at the Naval Military School in Newportville Island. So everyone in my family does do something in education. In my case, if you can't teach, I guess you run for the Board of Ed. I guess that's the way you do it. But I just want you to think about it. We were in the same situation 20 years ago. We had this, nope, it's us against them mentality, and guess what? It didn't turn out well. It turned out negative for everyone involved. So all I'm asking is, keep an open mind and go through the process and do what's best for the kids and for the taxpayers of Farmington. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here would like to make public comment? Going once? All right, anybody online?
There are, oh, we do. We have Marcus Fairbrother.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes. State your name, address, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Yes. Marcus Fairbrother. I'm at 12 Candlewood Lane here in Farmington, actually right behind the high school. Just real quick, all I really wanted to say was, I'm encouraging the Town Council to accept the school board budget. You guys tasked the Board of Education to come up with a budget. They are obviously the ones who know the needs best, and they put together a thoughtful and responsible budget that really aims to improve student outcomes. You know, it addresses both the fixed costs and a lot of things that have been deferred in the past. So it seems like it might be a large budget, but really, it's really aiming at the student outcomes, and it's a thoughtful and responsible document. So I just wanted to encourage the Town Council to defer to those who know the needs best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
I do not see any other hands raised.
All right. Is Patty there?
Yeah.
Is Patty on?
Patty's online.
Okay.
I'm here.
Excellent. All right, so if there's no other public comment, then we can move on to item D. Keith?
Come on. Thank you. I make a motion to consider and take action on the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Second.
Thank you. Superintendent, if you want to come on up and your team?
Joey, well, they're getting set. Do you want me to just talk about the procedure tonight a little bit?
Please.
So tonight, we are going to meet with the school board, and if, depending on how long it goes, we can have some sandwiches if we need them. If not, you can take them home on your way out, and we have no other business other than the school. And then tomorrow, we're back at 4 o'clock with the Town Department heads.
Perfect. All right. Guys need more chairs?
You need me?
Thank you. Well, first, thank you, and thank you for the Board of Ed, for all your hard work. Thank you to the superintendent and her staff. You guys have been doing a phenomenal job for every, for the last 26 years I've been involved in this town, so it's a, you've been awesome. I look forward to working with you guys collaboratively, Lee? I strongly believe that we all want the best for Farmington. We have a spectacular town that we all love. But I'd like to address this, a couple points from last night. It's important for everybody to remember that the Town Council is the financial board for the town. It is our job to balance the needs of the town and the tax impact on all residences and businesses. It's a difficult balance, because we know the needs are real, but we also know that our decisions have a real financial impact on our residents and businesses. And the council wants to be clear, we have never made any suggestion that the superintendent has ever presented an irresponsible budget. We know that we have one of the best superintendents in this state of Connecticut, and from right here, a pretty good vice principal at another school, too.
Yeah.
You mentioned, and we all agree, we have one of the best school systems in the state, if not the nation. This wouldn't be possible without the Town Council adequately funding the school year after year. Each of us campaigned for a new high school. It was understanding that the tax increases needed to remain at or below 3% in order to afford the debt that would build the state-of-the-art $145 million school. Even without understanding, as our financial forecast projected, that there would be few years where debt of the high school would drive up our tax rate. That time is now. But as a financial board, it's our job to work as hard as possible to keep the tax increases reasonable. We understand that last year, both the town and the board made significant reductions in the budget to mitigate the impact of the reevaluation. It's going to be difficult to restore all reductions in this fiscal year. And according to our financial forecasts, next year is going to be difficult as well for a lot of the same reasons. With that said, we understand that the Board of Ed's needs this year are significant. We are hopeful that we can find reductions that will make it work and won't impact programs or personnel. We look forward to working with you tonight and reviewing your recommended budget. So thank you. And obviously, we got this great book, and you gave us some more literature today.
Yes, yes. So we often have similar questions from year to year, so we build a Q and A, and we add questions and answers as questions and answers come up throughout our budget process. So we included the Q and A. We also provided the PowerPoint for the Board of Education's recommended budget and our capital PowerPoint, just so you had all of those things in front of you as we go through the section-by-section review of our budget recommendation. Scott Hurwitz is our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and he will provide an introduction to each section of our budget book. I feel like we probably should do introductions across the table, just so that anyone who is newer will understand the roles that each one of us play. So all of you know me now, so we'll start with Sam at the end.
I'm Sam Kilpatrick. I'm Director of School Facilities.
I'm Beth Haber. I'm the Business Manager.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Hurwitz, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
Hello, I'm Kim Nguyen. I'm Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
And I'm Matt Ross. I'm the IT Director.
Thank you.
Fabulous team, and, you know, we're very, you know, we're looking forward to this review and any questions that you might have. So I'll start off, and we'll have the PowerPoint kind of go through each of, start with the 100 series, so start there.
We're going through the book now, not the pack you gave us, right? So always get everybody caught up, so the book, if you have it, for the 100 series.
So we'll make a stop on each tab along our way there. So thank you, Superintendent Greeter. I know the council had an opportunity last night to hear the Board of Education's 24-25 recommended budget from the superintendent and our board chair, and we're looking forward to walking you through the budget book this afternoon. Overall, the Board of Education is requesting $80,468,995,000, constituting an increase of $4,531,773, or 5.97%. And as the superintendent alluded to a moment ago, we're going to go through each of our large buckets that comprise of our overall budget. So we call those objects, and we'll go object by object, as we've done in the past as well. We'll start with salaries, then move to benefits, services, supplies, equipment, and then dues and fees. We welcome any questions and comments throughout as we dive into the budget today, and we'll start with the salaries. So if you can find the tab noted salaries, that is our first object, which accounts for a large portion of our budget, 66% overall of the total budget, and the budget increase in our salary line this year is 5.34%. And this reflects our contractual obligations. The series reflects each association's salary increases for the coming year, which are also highlighted on the slide that you can see on the screen. And at this time, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to respond to those.
All right, just give me a second to go through the pages here really quick again. Dave, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Amy?
Uh, no.
Keith?
No, sir.
Sarah?
Can you just explain in a little more detail the added positions to the director line?
Absolutely. So the director line is quite broad. It holds, right now, we're looking at adding the Coordinator for Safety and Residency. In your Q and A booklet, there's also a description of what that position is envisioned to look like. When I presented to the board early in the year, I discussed that currently, we have a tremendous partnership with our police department. We're so thankful for the professionalism and support that we receive. We are great partners, unlike, I think, really a model for the rest of the state in that regard. I have many colleagues who cannot say the same about that relationship. So on a quarterly basis, each region across the state has regional security gatherings. Currently, I attend those along with Sam Kilpatrick, our Director of Facilities, and oftentimes, our liaison from the police department attends as well. You know, when we look around that room, we are surrounded by towns that are much smaller than ours oftentimes, and they're represented by their Director of Safety, Security, whatever, you know, they might have a slightly different title or variation. And so it's something that has become quite common across districts. It was a request that we made last year that was cut from the budget, and I think it, it's not to say that our team isn't capable of working through these things, but it really is an incredible priority and something that requires consistent focus, and we feel that that position can do that. If you look in the Q and A, you can see a variety of the roles and responsibilities. Residency currently sits under the Special Services Department, and, you know, our school principals do work on residency, but they're also the lead learners and leaders of their schools every day, and they have a number of responsibilities that require their attention and focus. We believe that by adding this position, it could potentially save the district money based on the assumptions we're making around folks that may be enrolled in our schools that are not actually residing in the town of Farmington and contributing to our taxes. And so if the, if we have a centralized, a single registration point in the district, that means that one team is reviewing every resident. When folks move in, they, and they're not homeowners, they sign residency affidavits, and so we would have one single office reviewing those. And, you know, in the event that that individual is able to identify, say, six, six non-residents attending our schools, it would likely pay for itself at that point, when you consider the cost associated with educating students in our district. Certainly, we're happy and thrilled with the great students that we have here, but it is an important step we believe the district needs to take, and that's just a part of the job, right? The other part, again, would be managing our security protocols. Soon, we'll be meeting with the council to review. Our audit is in its final stages, a 10-year audit on safety and security. This, we've already been told that that is one of the top recommendations that's being made by our auditor as well, so something that we take seriously. But that is the main driver. We also have, I don't know if Matt wants to talk about the end-user technician in the director's line as well?
So as part of a multi-year staffing plan, I've been proposing an additional end-user support position. This position is the boots-on-the-ground in the schools servicing our teachers and our students. They service the Chromebooks for all of our students, all 5,000 semi Chromebooks we have. It's part of buildings, belt and suspenders within my staffing to account for whether it's just turnover, but also the increased volume in end-user support. Because a lot of our backend systems have, are virtualized, we've seen that shift to a lot more of the work that we do is that end-user support. So there are currently two individuals that hold that role and cover the entire district. What I'm proposing is an additional third team member that would also fulfill that role.
You want to just move that microphone to the middle for them, so it's split between everybody?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And that request is also, has been an ongoing request that has been cut in past budgets. I will also add, you may be saying, well, that's only two positions, Scott, and it looks like quite a hefty increase on this page, which is probably where your question came from, and that is because we hold funds in this account when we're negotiating large contracts, and we are currently in the midst of negotiating with our non-certified employees. That's the FPSU, Farmington Public Schools Employees United. And so since that contract is not settled, but it takes effect July 1 of 2024, we try to analyze and have money set aside so that we can cover our budget for those potential changes in that contract once it's negotiated. That's common every year. The same would have happened last year. Administrators would have been held in this line, the year before would have been the teachers' union, and so this is a common practice in the district of where those funds would be held until a contract is agreed upon.
Some of the positions that are in FPSU.
So that would be our custodians, our clerical staff, our paraeducators, our tutors. They would all be FPSU employees.
And just to follow up, I know, you know, I was a police officer here. The police department actually helped you. The Police Department actually helped you with the residency and stuff. Are we still doing active investigations or is that taking a backseat now and you need that person to start facilitating investigations again?
You know, like I said before, they're extraordinarily helpful. However, I do think with the continuous demands for support across the community, it's another challenge. And like I said before, not only would our, you know, we would certainly continue to partner with the department, but we're hopeful that whoever steps into that role can assist and aid in investigations that are taking place, but also handling the front end. Right now, that registration happens at every single individual school. It would also probably be nice for our families who are registering in district to, you know, if they have three children at three different schools, they have to make three stops across the community. That means there's three different individuals, three different principals analyzing the paperwork. Again, if it goes through one stop first, we think it just increases the consistency and reliability of that process.
I meant, like, do we have any ongoing investigations? Have we found stuff this past year, the year before?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
And obviously, with that position also, that doesn't diminish the collaborative work with the Police Department and that person for the school's security? Or does that diminish the Police Department side because you've got the full-time person working all the time?
No, we expect that partnership to continue to flourish in this role. You know, oftentimes, you know, if we're afforded the opportunity to hire someone, oftentimes, they're coming with a strong background from law enforcement. That's a pretty, I'm not saying that would be requisite, but it's certainly within the realm of possibility that will hopefully attract applicants who have, you know, served in similar roles in investigation, safety and security, somebody who's an expert who can join our team and continue to add to it.
Yes.
Joe, just I want to kind of piggyback on what they're saying. And from the Board's perspective, this is a position of high value for us because, well, it may not necessarily be a dollar-for-dollar savings. You know, it's really more about helping us properly allocate resources across the district. When you put the residency burden on the individual building principals, that's just another piece of the puzzle they've got to put together on a daily basis. And so, that's a challenge for us. But more importantly, it's with the special ed piece. Because what we find is that people could come into district, you know, after we've approved the budget, and this person may not be a Farmington resident. And we've already committed, and maybe even after PPT, there's an outplacement that has to occur for this particular child. And then, we find out this child is not, you know, a legal resident of Farmington. We've spent, you know, like I said last night, between $5,000, maybe as much as $100,000, you know? And so, what the Board thinks about this position is it's kind of a response to you guys to say, look, this is a place where we're leaking costs, and this is a place we can tighten it up. And that's why I think we're really pretty strongly in favor of bringing this position to you and why we're highlighting it today.
Yeah. No doubt.
Is there a guess on how many students we think there are? That, you know, I don't know, is there like a, in what you guys do, is there like a district standard of a percentage, you know, in a district where you would expect there to be kids that might, or students that might be coming from a different? I'd be reluctant to put a number on that. I can tell you that I have, you know, when I looked into this project, I've partnered with, you know, communities that are surrounding us too, communities that we might, and they're extensively busy. There are businesses set up to attract these types of activities to happen, and they are happening. You know, many of the districts that I'm comparing to have multiple, you know, they have a director, an assistant director, multiple. You know, we're not asking for that at this point, given the size as well, but they're, it's quite common. It's quite common. Is there like a comparable district in our area that has one of these directors that has a number of, that they have found in their town? Yeah, I would say, you know, we communicate pretty closely with the West Hartford Public Schools. I can tell you that they have an assistant director that they had to hire that is pretty much primarily outdoing residency every single day. Sure. You know, at bus stops or, like I said, there are, they've found advertising, you know, schemes that say will help you register, and they may not be living in that town. They transport, you know, large groups of students from another area into the community. That's quite frequent. Okay. I wish I could give you an exact number, but I can tell you that there, that, I spent a day there with them as well, just because, again, you know, before we bring something forward, we want to understand its value. And I spent a full day there over a year ago, and we're close colleagues. We meet on a quarterly basis and discuss what's happening to try to understand what are the trends that they may be seeing that might also be existing elsewhere. Thank you. You're welcome.
Brian, oh, you want to go?
Sorry, I just have a follow-up question.
Oh. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Have they been able to demonstrate to you that they've been able to save money doing that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we've been successful as the Chair had asked before, you know, when our Police Department gets involved, it's usually something that's been ongoing and lingering for some time. But, you know, we've been successful as well identifying, you know, several cases a year just in our current practice. And that's, like I said, where it's not a direct focus of any one individual currently.
And to be clear, and it's not actually a dollar-for-dollar saving that goes back into the general fund. It's, as you know from your time, right? When we're funding special education, we're taking money from somewhere else in the overall approved budget and then having to put it towards that unexpected expense. So, that's really how we see this as a cost savings for us. And that, you know, it can really be more, hue more towards the actual approved budget than what we kind of do now, which is kind of put pieces together of a puzzle when something like this happens.
Got it. Brian?
Thank you. And thank you for that. It's good to know that this is what makes this such a strong school system, that we do look at these things. My question for you is that we are, Farmington is a unique town. We're not the same as every other town. We have our own individual needs in this community, and we have experts that are helping us assess those and make recommendations for what we should be doing, which is how you put this together. So, I'm kind of curious to know, what is not in this budget that has been recommended that you have done to kind of keep costs down? I mean, not everything, but just a, you know, big picture thing. What is not in here that is you trying to be reasonable? And what are we not getting that we need?
Brian, can we follow up with that after? Let's go section by section unless there's something in particular to the Directors.
Yeah, that's, well, I was talking for salaries.
Yeah.
In terms of what we need in terms of staff, just for staff. And you're right, I do have that question for other things, but I'm talking specifically to staff, like what teachers are we not getting that, or staff that we need?
So, I'll start by saying our principals know that they should come in with low budgets. It's something that we set up as an expectation. We do really focus on excellence in our academic educational work, but also excellence in budgeting and fiscal management. And we, you know, I've been here 15 years, and that is something that I have been very committed to, is trying to bring in budgets that are reasonable. So, because I model that, everyone along the line is doing the same thing. So, there are things that our principals would like to have, and they don't even bring it to us because they know it was, we said this is going to be a difficult year. We're coming off of ESER not being available to us any longer. We're coming off of, as I said last night, reductions last year, some of which was put on ESER and now has to come into the operating budget. We also have a bus contract that, you know, we really focused in, listened to our community about some of the challenges and went out to bid. And we will have a new bus company come this, in this coming year. But we're going to have new buses, and that costs additional money. You'll see in this budget that there is around $800,000 for that. We would estimate, we would have been at about $500,000 for the increase anyway if it were status quo. So, it's a little higher than that this year. So, we knew all of the, and the economy. So, we knew all of those things were happening. So, our principals came in already trying to have lower budgets. And some of the positions that they had recommended, it could be like a new science position at the high school or different requests that they've had. We had said, it's not this year. We can't do it this year. I think a lot of what they've asked for in equipment, we said no to. So, it was around $500,000 that we cut from their original proposals. But they already came in, you know, as tight as they could because they knew it was a challenging budget year for all the reasons I mentioned last night and what I've just talked about now.
Thank you.
I'll just share an example. I do think, you know, as the Superintendent alluded to, I know they meet with our Assistant Superintendent Kim, Assistant Superintendent Kim Nguyen, along with our HR Coordinator. They go to every single school and they listen to, you know, lots of ideas from principals about, around where we continue to see needs. But they, along with this team, heavily scrutinizes what we put forward into our budget. We take that responsibility seriously. You know, when I was the principal of the high school, we continued to see our computer science demand and numbers grow and grow and grow. We have more and more interest in those offerings. And so, there was a proposal that didn't make it forward for an additional computer science teacher. In the past, we have a new department head this year at the high school, and that department head, again, being very thoughtful around how to approach it, looked at every single teacher's background in the department and began to look at, is there another way without adding FTE that we could expand the computer science program? And they were able to find opportunities to have teachers certified or be able to teach in the computer science program. So, the program is growing, but we don't have a request for an additional FTE because they knew we're adding a brand-new high school, a beautiful state-of-the-art high school with a culinary program. That program, unfortunately, we're going to have to say no to a lot of kids. The, you know, we were halfway through the registration process, and we had over 300 students just through two grade levels applying to be in that class. So, you have to make those tough decisions though, right? And you also have to look creatively around how you can meet the needs of our students. And I applaud our department head for doing that and understanding that, you know, we're going to ask for what we think are the highest leverage, highest need positions at any given time.
Thank you for doing that and finding solutions without adding staff and just putting staff where we absolutely need them. I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty, you have any questions?
Yes, I'm looking at page 15, which just has the summary of the staffing by category. And we've talked about the Directors, and Scott just mentioned the culinary. And I was wondering if you could provide a little other, a little more information on some of the additions, such as at the elementary school level? And also, some of these are identified as coming off of ESER. And I guess my question is, is there a reason they were funded by ESER to begin with as, given the purposes of ESER and knowing that eventually they'd have to be back on operating?
Sure, I think Kim and I would be happy to respond to that. I can talk a little bit about the grant funding side, and then I'll have Kim talk a little bit more about the positions that are actually proposed. 1.7 of, and so, that doesn't mean 0.7 of an actual human, but based on how much they teach, the fraction, we had actually planned last year to remove all of our certified and non-certified staffing off of ESER. I do want to commend our team here for that thoughtful approach and how to handle. You know, you may read about the fiscal cliff. Many, many districts are in the position, again, surrounding us of, you know, eliminating 20 or more positions in those districts that they've held on federal grants for the past several years. It's a dangerous position to be in. We've tried our best to put one-time costs on the grant or short-term costs so that we weren't in a position where we were adding to our budget coming off the grant. Unfortunately, we all know it was a very difficult budget year last year. We had proposed to move those positions. So, these are existing positions. For several years, we had proposed to move those onto the operating budget, but just were unable to, we had an additional year of funding, and we're unable to do that from the previous year. So, that is why part of the increase is coming off the grant. Like I said, we strategized to not be in that position, but unfortunately, we're unable to do so. But I'll hand it over to Kim to talk more about the actual positions.
Thank you, Scott. I'll speak about the positions that are proposed in terms of the way in which we're responding to student need. And the first is an English-language learner teacher. You see that we are bringing into the operating budget a halftime of a position and then asking for an additional halftime to support the very large numbers of students and families moving into this community who need these services. Our demographics are changing, and we have an obligation, we are mandated by the state to provide language-learning services to students, and we're doing it as efficiently as we possibly can. But our numbers are growing every year, and so, this position is there to really provide the services that we are mandated to provide. The culinary teacher, I think, as Scott mentioned a moment ago, I think this was a part of the community's interest in when we decided that we were going to open a new school. This was a program that was beloved when it was here and sad when it had to be eliminated. And so, bringing it back, I think you can see in terms of student interest and student demand is an exciting opportunity. And we've built a facility with equipment and space for a culinary program, and so, we need a teacher to teach it. The elementary teacher and grade-five teacher are both positions that principals propose because they look carefully at enrollment projections, classes moving forward, looking at the size of the class this year. And as they come forward into fifth grade, we do careful analysis of class sizes and think about possible efficiencies in answer to your question about, you know, what's something that maybe we decided not to bring forward. There was a request for a sixth-grade elementary teacher as well, but looking more carefully, you know, West Woods is a school that, where we can be very efficient in our class-size numbers because they're all there in one school. They're not in four separate schools. But the grade-five position is really needed to keep our class sizes at a reasonable number, as is the elementary teacher for Noah Wallace. I just, if you go to page 12 of the Q and A, you can follow along. Oh, thank you. Yes, page 12. That's what I'm speaking from. You do see here an efficiency we were able to figure out in terms of scheduling, and so, there is actually a reduction in staffing at West Woods in our World Language Department. So, that's just another example of what Superintendent Greeter was speaking about in terms of us really scrutinizing what we absolutely need and each year kind of rethinking how we allocate staff and how we can still provide high-quality programming. In some ways, that means we need additional staff, and sometimes, we can find ways to reduce staff. And then, finally, the 0.5 request for an IAR social worker. I think we all know that our children need a lot of mental health support, and a social worker not only works directly with children in the school, but with their families. And so, we're stretched thin in this area for a school of that size. And so, we're asking for an additional halftime social worker to really respond to the caseload that, you know, we see through our data review and what the needs of our students and families are. So, those are the additional positions that we're asking for. The section that Scott spoke about were the movement off of grants and including the ESER grant.
And I'll just add, substitutes is on page 13 as well. So, I did want to address that. And I read, I read an article in late January. This is not our budget story, but the Superintendent of the Greenwich Public Schools actually called out substitute teachers as a driver of their budget. It's almost $1 million they're asking for in substitutes, and that is a common trend you're seeing around the state as well. Coming off the pandemic, the health needs of adults have grown exponentially. And, you know, if you look at our monthly financial statements, you can see that our substitute line continues to be an area where we're really being pushed because of the health needs of adults. And this is, this is not a Farmington, a Farmington trend. As I said, it's really something we're seeing probably nationwide. I can only speak for the state in terms of the need for qualified substitute teachers to step in for teachers who are on extended or prolonged leaves of absence or health-related leaves. And so, not only that, so we were using, you know, ESER funding to help with our need for substitutes during that time, but that need is showing a trend of continuing along with an attempt to try to make substitute pay competitive within the region as well. So, I just thought that was worthy of noting also.
Scott, you actually anticipated my name? Scott, you actually, Scott, you actually anticipated my next question.
Patty, I wanted to jump in and also kind of answer your question if I could a little bit. Thank you. And this kind of goes to something that was made, a comment, made in public comment regarding how the school district thinks about grant money and how it's spent. And I want to kind of go back a few years to when we were considering all-day kindergarten. And and that was, that was going to be a significant value driver to the to the budget. And there was all kinds of things happening. And school districts were taking grant money and using that to fund their their rollout of of what was, you know, all-day kindergarten. We didn't do that. We took our time with it and we went, we went half-day before we went full-day. Again, because we understood that that was going to be a burden on the budget long term. And so philosophically, when we could have done that, we we chose not to. And Simsberry wound up doing it and they got, they got, you know, smoked with like an 8% the following year. Why, I I bring that to your attention only to kind of stress and highlight the fact that the superintendent has has striven, strove, has strived during her tenure and and educated the board, frankly, in why putting things on grants. And then with the expectation that we'll just roll them into operating in a future year is bad business. It's bad financial planning. And so when we have the ESER situation that you have here, at the end of the day, it could have been so much more challenging if we weren't as responsible as we were thinking about this money. You have 2.7 FTE coming off ESER. That's that's the, that's really the answer to the question, I think, that you guys are asking. You know, 2.7 FTE plus the change in the substitutes line is really, is the, is the, is the only delta that we're really thinking about. We're talking about coming off of ESER. It's not like we're pulling hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars and dumping them into the operating expenditures. But I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I I just want to general, the, on the staffing, you know, it's not necessarily a hard financial question, but just can you explain the the class size bit? So, you know, I know Wallace, for example, is there an idea of what the class size would be without that teacher? And then what it would be with that teacher and why it's important? You know, I understand, you know, fewer students per teacher is better, but what what is that difference? Just so so the community understands.
Building our budget, it is based on Board of Education policy. There is a ratio that we meet. So it's, it's not like we go over that ratio. We stay within that ratio. And I'll just have Kim go into some detail, but we, we have our projections in October. We do every October. We look at where we are, were we close to our projections from the previous year? And then we build our projections out. And that is really the foundation of how many teachers, classroom teachers, we're going to need at the elementary level. So I'll just have.
So our policy states that we would not exceed a ratio of 19.5 students to one teacher across all schools. So across K to four, across all grades in all schools, K to four. But in a little school, a smaller school like Union School with three teachers at a grade level, you can go, you can have enrollment fluctuate and it makes it harder to, what I would say, smooth it out as it is at West Woods where you have 14 teachers and you add five teachers, five students, you can put one per teacher and it it's not a big impact. But at Union School, if you have three teachers and five students or six students move in, it's a bigger impact. And so generally, we certainly try to keep our K1, 2 classes smaller. We look carefully at that. We're, we're hoping to not exceed 20, 21 students. We have to at times, but, you know, we're trying to aim for something like that. And when we see in our grades three and four levels, class sizes creeping up to 23, 24, then we're starting to look at, you know, across buildings, could we balance teachers a little differently? And it fluctuates over time. So it may look pretty good right now. And then over the summer, we have, you know, five families move in and they're all going to East Farms. And, you know, East Farms is really struggling with enrollment. So, you know, when you say without the additional elementary teacher at Noah Wallace, it might take a first-grade class and drive the numbers up to 23, 24 in a first-grade class, which is not something we feel good about.
The following year and the year after.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I have a couple of things, if I could.
Certainly.
For Scott. So part of, part of the S P S E U negotiations, obviously, you're there. You're gonna award a contract that's gonna go in effect on July 1st, 2024, I'm assuming, right?
That's the plan.
That's the plan. If all goes, if that, if all goes well. So I guess from part of, part of, my question on this would be, when we look at that on the director line item, and you said a majority of, percentage of that is going to go towards this contract negotiation. Do we know percentage-wise, I mean roughly, what you think that is?
Yeah, given the fact that we're engaged. Given the fact that we're engaged in negotiations right now.
That would be premature.
That would, that would, I would prefer to to say that what we do is we we utilize trends from across. So we look at municipal employee settlement trends from the past year. And so we have, I think, you know, the board negotiations committee has a, what I think is a a strong target. And then, you know, as we negotiate, we we try to, you know, we want to certainly be fair to to our employees as well, but also very thoughtful around the impact that that has. So the other, I would say that, you know, the the FASA contract and the FEA contract through statute come come to the council. And so the council is the final decision maker on those. There is not that statutory obligation. So when you asked in the beginning, July 1st, we, you know, we hope not to be, there are some districts for their, for their non-certified contracts that go well into the year and then, and then end up settling back, you know, on those. We're, you know, we're moving right along and we set them early so that, so that we can hopefully just start with a settlement for July 1. But.
Yeah, no, no hard, no hard dates, no hard percentages. You're in in negotiations.
Correct.
But that gives us some, some view.
Do you know how many ears this like opened up, like what number?
The other, the other, the other.
You show all your cards here.
Well, if they could get their whole budget, it wouldn't be a problem.
It still would be a little higher.
So, so the second thing on the ESER, on the ESER funding and in what I, what I hear in in your, in in your, what you discussed with us is that you were looking very carefully at where this ESER funding was, right? You were handling that ESER grant with careful consideration on when it finally sunsetted, what would happen, how that impact would be here, right? And obviously, with the the cutbacks from a year ago, the significant cutbacks from a year ago, some of those things, just the strategy kind of couldn't be fully implemented, right? Because at the end of the day, you know, you had less money. So you were looking at the fact that you had some more federal funding, a little more along on the timeline, and here we are.
Yeah. Our approach with ESER from the beginning was one-time costs. So that when it went away, it went away and we didn't have a big impact on the budget. And then for these, if you look, there are tiny pieces of positions that were on ESER. You know, something, you know, we had increased enrollment or whatever it might have been. And we either addressed it in ESER or we had put it in the 23, 24 budget is either a new position or we were phasing positions back onto the operating so it wouldn't all be in in one year like it is now. And we just couldn't achieve that last year because of a unique set of circumstances. And so the positions that we hoped to phase back into the operating budget stayed in ESER. And then a couple of the positions that were proposed for 23, 24 that we couldn't achieve in the operating budget, but they were crucial, like special education position or Kim mentioned, our English language learner, you know, position. We did put that in ESER because we really, there are some that we don't have a choice to hold for a year. We have to because of student need, because of IEPs, because of the number of students we have. We have mandates that we have to follow, you know, and so we had to put them on ESER. We would rather have put them in the operating budget. It just wasn't the year that we could achieve that. We did share with the council and the board those positions that were cut last year that were going into ESER. So we were very transparent about it and we did say it would affect this budget year because they're not positions that are a choice. We must put them back in. We also, when we made cuts to other lines, we, again, didn't have a choice in some areas that we had to put those other cuts into ESER. So we try to articulate that. When you look at page 12 and 13, you see that we label them very clearly so that our board knows, our community, all of you know, that, you know, in this particular area for certified of the 1.5, 5.1 FTEs that Kim reviewed, 1.7 of those were on ESER and reflected, you know, 23, 24 budget reductions. And then we had that kind of same trend when it came to a non-certified to some of those positions. Some never made it, like the residency. We had that, those positions in last year. We just said we're gonna postpone it another year and we didn't put them on ESER. So there's a combination here of new positions we're putting forward and then some positions that were, and that might reflect a reduction from last year. And then positions that were either on ESER or were moved to ESER as a result of the 23, 24 budget reduction.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next series.
So if we can move to the benefits tab, the second object is benefits, which accounts for 15% of the total budget. The budget increase in benefits is 1.48% overall and provides 100%, 100% of expected claims in administration of employees' health insurance. All associations working for the Farmington Public Schools have high deductible HSAs with co-insurance. This also accounts for workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, FICA Medicare and other contractual benefits such as life, long-term disability and the retirement contributions. Are there any questions on the benefits section?
Brian, do you have anything?
I do not.
Patty, you have any questions?
Yeah, what's the current status of our reserve for the insurance and other?
We are very fortunate right now. Our our reserve is is healthy. It's actually something I've been in. You know, we, we share that account with the, with the town, with the entire town of Farmington. And and so I I would say that we're in pretty good shape, plus $4 million currently. We do have a policy that dictates we have to have at least 25% of projected claims in there. So we are above that currently in that area. I would say in our budget book, I don't have the page off the top of my head, but there's a a trend of of self-insurance here in Farmington and we and we seem to. And we also, I would say we also work, we have a, we have an insurance consultant that the town also utilizes as well as Cigna, who is our healthcare provider. So they provide projected claims. Our consultants and actuaries provide projected claims. I will say that what we budget is, it, we usually try to find a spot in the middle. We did budget less than than both of those projections that we've received thus far. But we, like I said, to your question, Patty, we are in a a good position there. At some point, if we continue to stay on trend, we'll have, you know, a tough health. You know, it's so volatile. There are, there are some volatile areas. I would say health insurance is one of them. But we're trending in a positive direction currently.
So many years ago, I came right, right when the recession was happening, I came to Farmington. It was fun times back then with the budget. But one of the things that happened as a result of, right before I arrived, the budget process, it was a pretty significant year, '09, '10, that we were trying to put a budget together or that, at the time, those that were here. And that was a pretty significant, yes, we had a negative 32,000 that we budgeted. And we did, in many ways, deplete the reserve. So we then came together as a town and a board and we created a a joint policy, which I think is, remains a best practice in in Connecticut and beyond. And it it articulates when we can actually reduce our benefits, our self-insurance, because we're at a certain level in the reserve. We are in a position right now where we could find efficiencies and make some reductions overall to that particular line item and still be within policy. So I I say that I typically don't do that. I I like to talk to, have all of us together when we talk about that because it is a joint reserve and we share in the risk of any decision we make. So that particular reserve is above the policy level, which gives us the opportunity to reduce in that account and utilize some of our reserve then, you know, for claims that we incur next year. So that is something that we can talk about as we go through the day, but that is an area where we are above the policy level that we keep there. And again, we, we're conservative in our budget, we budgeting, we try to be very thoughtful about that account because it, that, along with special services and facilities, are areas that can change a budget in a moment. And so we're, we're very careful about that, but we do have an excellent policy that guides us when it comes to our reserve.
Thank you.
Sarah.
I don't have any questions on this one.
Keith. Amy. Dave.
I'm fine with this series.
Let me go to the next.
All right. The third object is services. So if you want to find that tab. Services accounts for 15% of the total budget. The budget increase in the services line is 11.58% overall. This reflects a variety of essential services to our school district, including but not limited to consultation services and outplacement tuition costs for special education. As you just heard from the superintendent, that's a highly volatile budgetary area. Major facility projects, we have those planned and then sometimes unplanned. Utilities, our summer school program, K8, core applications and systems for district technology operations, professional development. And probably the largest driver and and a major driver of our budget overall, which we've already touched on briefly, our transportation services contract, where the special education side of transportation is another volatile area to monitor. And with that, we'll open it for any questions.
David, you want to start off?
I'm good right now.
Amy, do you have anything?
No, right, not, not right now.
Keith?
I have another sort of, just, I understand the necessity, but I just wanted to hear it explained just for the sake of just knowing what the money's being spent on. So pages 29 and 33 in here, there's increases for professional education services. It looks like it involves children's special needs and is this some of the cost of like outplacement for students, things of that nature or?
No, there's a public and private tuition lines that are, that would cover that area. This is, this is quite a large, a large area, so it does account for, you know, the need for specialized program and consultation. We have several consultation groups that work with our, you know, one thing that I think sets Farmington apart from many of our surrounding districts is that Farmington is committed to the students of Farmington. And we do everything we can to educate our students in Farmington. And so although I know our tuition lines appear, appear high, I would, I would say that comparatively, they are quite low in in terms of other districts. So we offer quite a bit of substantial in-district programming for students so that our students can be educated alongside their their peers within the community. We had, this is an area where we've used ESER funding as well to offset, to offset costs. So that is a part of, a part of this budget. And then the other side of the budget, Kim works really hard on, which is also services as it relates to our curriculum and some professional development as well. And so that's detailed.
So it's, it's essentially money being spent to help keep students in district as opposed to being outplayed, so the opposite of what I said, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
In in this specific page, yes.
And then, so to that same vein, on the restoration of funds, so on like page 33, where it says restoration of funds, my question on that, is that restoration, is that money that was put on ESER due to the constraints from last year's budget? I'm assuming, correct? So, but. So, but I guess my bigger question is, was that budgeted two years ago and then would have been gone away had we not put it on ESSER? Or was that something newly added last year that was then put on ESSER? Do you know what I'm saying? Okay.
I think some of what we mean by restoration of funds is that we made a choice to reduce in our curriculum development and professional development lines last year, and so, we did less this year.
Okay, yeah, so it was, in previous years, you had closer to this amount.
Yes.
And then, last year, to keep that equivalent, you put some of that on ESSER, and now you'd like to go back to where you were.
Right.
Correct. You know, we expended out of our operating a little over $177,000. And you can see, we were cut in this area last year, so we budgeted $158,000. So, you know, exactly.
Thank you.
Page 53, for the school buses. The patch reported a contract for 4.2. You have a 4.6, the difference of 400 and change.
Yeah, so that contract has been provisionally awarded. We're actually, right before I came down here, I was working on closing up some Is and Ts and what have you. So, what we spend in transportation, the big buses are quite easy to predict, right? We have 40 bus routes when they're all operating and being serviced. And so, that is our intention in our new contract, so that's easy to predict. Where we have, what was really attractive about the vendor that we ended up choosing is that, including our current contractor, many of the... We had substantial turnout for bidding, by the way, I'll say that. Quite larger, you know, larger than pretty much anybody else has had in the state in quite some time, which talks about the attractiveness of this community. But, many of them were offering, even on their large buses, like a four-hour, you know, and then, if the bus goes over four hours, you pay in quarter-hour increments. And so, that's volatile, right? It's very hard to predict, especially if you're driving up and down Route 4 in Farmington. And it's just not something we're interested in doing, right? It also costs money on the back end when our business office is trying to decipher the costs related to vans from a day-to-day and the shifting of that. But, you know, the other component of this, in that cost, would be our special transportation as well, and, you know, what we're anticipating for that. But, you know, if a student goes on a van, or off a van, or new students move into district that have that already in their IEP, it's a mandate. Those are unanticipated costs as well. So that's our projection for what it will cost next year. I actually think, you know, something interesting to look at as well is what we budget for transportation and what our actuals are. In our last several years, you can see we budgeted a set amount for transportation, but we are actually spending well over that. You know, I am confident, I won't say with certainty, but I do feel that the way that this contract has been devised, in the fact that the price is the price, we will not at least have volatility in terms of what we think we're going to spend for a van and what we're being charged for a van. The price of the van is the price of the van in our contract, and we're very pleased to have that. So we anticipate that might at least help us better budget for our transportation costs.
The vendor that was selected also, it's called specialty transportation, but that is their specialty, is special education transportation. So we're hoping, with their expertise, to continue to look at efficiencies when it comes to that area, because that's the most volatile area of transportation, like Scott said. You know, we could be adding several vans in one year that were not budgeted for because it's in a child's IEP, that they would be transported and have specialized transportation. And as Bill had mentioned, sometimes students move within the, you know, middle of the school year, and we did not anticipate that. But to have a bus company that specializes in that area is very attractive to us and was part of the decision-making. You'll see in this increase, it's a little over $700,000, but transportation doesn't just live here. It also lives in the area of gasoline and field trips. So, it's a little higher than what you see here, the overall contract for the coming school year.
All right, so I remember what, last year, the other contract, you got reimbursement for gas? So that's a whole different thing now with this current contract with the new company?
Yeah, we, you know, when looking at other RFPs that were placed, really, the standard practice at this point is that districts would cover the cost of that. And so, while there's an increase there, you know, once we get all of our route set, we will have a cap. And so, if the company exceeds the cap, then they're responsible for any costs that go over that. But, you know, in an effort to, I don't know, lack of a better term, modernize, but also kind of go with what is standard practice, we did that. And we thought it would also help us attract additional vendors, which I'm not sure that that was a main driver. But, like I said, we achieved much more competition than anybody else statewide is right now on transportation contracts. Oftentimes, districts will go out to bid, and they'll receive the same bidder that's currently providing transportation services. There's many stories of districts who wanted to go out and increase competition, and they end up with the same vendor, but for 10% more than what they would have done if they had just continued to renegotiate. Like I said, we're very, very pleased with the vendors that expressed interest. But, you know, and the cost that I think we all realized, you know, when we started with the board, we said we anticipated between 15 and 20% as an increase, and we ended up landing right in that area. Again, with almost every single vehicle that will be driving our students next year being a brand-new vehicle, with Farmington Public Schools labeled on the side, with four cameras and audio in every bus, and video and audio in every van. And so that is, we think, safer and reliable transportation, which is what our community has been asking for.
Thank you, Sarah.
I had some questions on the building repair section on page 43. I was just curious how it's less than it was last year, but high school, repairs to the high school. Given that we'll be in a new high school next year, I was wondering if you could kind of explain what those continued costs are.
The costs at the high school specifically?
Yeah, on page 43.
Did go through any, anything that is warranted or is the responsibility of the contractor going forward? We did take out of the budget. That does not mean... So if we go, so like, for instance, air filters, we left money in the budget because after that year, we will have a stock of filters for the coming year, but typically, we're buying filters towards the end of the year to be reinstalled over the summer. So that is one thing that would stay in there. Custodial equipment, we do have a lot of new custodial equipment, but there are still pieces that we're bringing over from the old building. So there needs to be, that's obviously not something that the project would bear. So we'll need to have funds to be able to repair or replace equipment. Chemical waste disposal, that's an ongoing cost. So that's every year, like science labs that have chemicals. We use chemicals, we have to properly dispose of them. Anything that you see listed there are ongoing costs that are kind of not warranted items or items that we would expect the contractor would fix within that first year of operation in the building.
Okay.
So I think you'll see a lot more zeros when it comes to, like, for instance, elevator repairs. Obviously, if something's wrong with the elevator for this year, we'll have to, we'll call the contractor to repair it. However, there's inspections ongoing that we'll need to maintain, that that isn't a project cost.
Okay.
That answers the question?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. And then I was just wondering if you could speak to, just sticking with the repairs. There were some major repairs at, I think it was Union School, with the major repair request, basketball hoops in the office, project faculty room improvements. I was just wondering if you could speak to those a little bit, what those were. Page 46.
Yeah, so at Union School, the projects that we put forward, the first one was one that the PTO was actually trying to accomplish at Union School to replace the basketball hoops there, not realizing that the structure associated with the existing hoops wasn't enough to support the hoops that they wanted to purchase. And it was well out of the budget there for them to be able to do that. So that cost that's associated there is for a more modern basketball hoop, one that raises and lowers. So with younger kids, you'd want to be able to lower the hoop as well sometimes. And also, provides the proper structure for a new basketball hoop of that size. The work in the main office was actually reduced from a project that was taken on at the front entry at Union. They had intended to do kind of a modernization of the office there with that project, but the budget didn't bear it. So, we're trying to start to look at that to clean up a lot of the walls that are in there are covered with years of conduit being run for different things. So we're trying to clean that up in anticipation of using some security dollars, perhaps to reconfigure the entry and exit of that office as well. Some grant funds to be able to provide some new furniture at some point as well. And then, the teachers' staff room improvements. There's a kitchenette, I guess you would call it there, that's well past its lifespan. It's something that we want to replace there. And then, we're also looking to redo the carpeting in there because there's kind of an island cabinet in there that... Once that's removed, we'll have to redo the flooring. But the cabinet is kind of not helping with the function of that space as well. So we'd like to have that removed to have a little more open space there.
Okay. And then, if you don't mind, I just have, since it's all in the repairs, page 50. I was curious, at the moving contingency cost? Only because I kind of, I wasn't sure what that was. If you look at page 50, it's the very end. There's a, yeah, moving contingency cost. And I didn't know if it had something to do with moving to the new building, because it was just, I thought those costs were covered under the new building cost, but maybe I don't know what it is, so...
So there, a lot of, obviously, the cost of moving from one building to the other building, that is definitely within the project scope. We also have some moves where we're taking fitness equipment from the current high school to Irving Robbins so that we can, our students will be able to use that over the summer. That is kind of a project cost as well. But there's also furniture that we'll be moving out of there that potentially might not fit within the budget of the project move. So we're identifying furniture that is not going to be used in the new high school but is adjustable and able to be used in other buildings throughout the district. Mac has a lot of technology that he's taking out of the old building to be redistributed throughout as well. So there's some costs there that we wanted to earmark if we need to be able to... So obviously, if we can do it with the staff that we have, then we'll do that. A lot of things we'll be able to do it. But there's also money that we'd like to be able to bring in a mover to be able to help us with some of that.
So, that makes sense. So it's basically, if you're not moving it to the new high school, the cost has to be separated out from the high school building if it's going to maybe a different school? Is that, am I understanding correctly or no?
Yes, with the exception that the program that we're moving from the high school to Irving Robbins is kind of, that's in order to get the project done. So that's, so to me, that's project-related because it's, we're doing that so that we can evacuate the high school so that they can demolish that building. So that's kind of a project cost in that one.
Yeah, I was just going to say, put everything you can under that project.
Patty, you have anything?
Sarah actually asked the questions I wanted to ask. No, I don't.
All right, Brian?
I'm good.
Anything else?
Just one quick thing on the bus contract. So, if I heard you right, Scott, you looked at a lot of, you looked at different RFPs that have been out there? And like, that's kind of how you... The RFP that Farmington put out there?
That's correct. We had, I think we had seven. We did a pre-bid, mandatory pre-bid conference. I think we had seven. We had somebody that didn't show up, but you have to be there. It was mandatory. Of those seven, we had six vendors bid, so they presented proposals. We then reviewed the proposals. We actually eliminated the two highest of those. And then we took the four, and we interviewed and really went through what I think is a quite rigorous process of interviews, site visits, further analysis. Then we entered into negotiation, and that's how we settled with. And, you know, the vendor that we chose had by far the highest references. And so, we want high-quality dependable service. You know, it's a part, it's a major function of the operations of our school. And so, we're hopeful that they'll deliver on that, and they have everywhere else they've been.
And the length of the contract?
It's a five-year, it's a five-year contract. Our original RFP was a three with two additions, with two additional one-years. Two vendors proposed an alternate bid of a five-year, which lowered... I think for them, you know, when they're buying 45 brand-new buses and, you know, 28 brand-new vans, that they want to ensure that. And our objective would be to have a long-term, successful partnership. They also, you know, we also mandated that those vendors identify a location in town so that they can pay taxes back to the town of Farmington for the vehicles that they own. So, that is happening as well.
Great. That was my last question. Thank you. Very good.
All right, next series.
All right. Moving on to supplies. So the fourth object is supplies, which accounts for 3% of the total budget. The budget increase in the supply line is 18.25% overall and reflects the facility rentals for athletics, in addition to a wide range of supplies. Instructional supplies, health supplies. Probably going to get some questions on the custodial supplies, which is a large increase, and we're happy to discuss that. Computer testing, textbooks, library books, and audiovisual computer materials as well. And really, you know, there is, you know, as we know, going to the grocery store, as we all do, what things cost before is not what they cost anymore. And, you know, I think Sam did a really good job. I don't know if you have that stored in your memory, but Sam did this exhibit of what it costs for paper towels and toilet papers, or toilet paper, you know, five years ago or six years ago, and what those costs are today. And those are driving costs in our supply line. But happy to answer any questions that might be out there as well.
Brian, you want to start?
Maybe we'll start with the custodial one. We'd like the detail on that. Thanks for leading us. And I saw it's for ESSER and stuff, so...
Yeah, some of the items were definitely on ESSER that came off over the last couple of years. But the analysis that I did was looking back at the cost of... The major drivers of custodial supplies, paper towels, toilet paper, garbage bags in particular, and the price of those alone has averaged around 110% increase between 2021 and 2024. So I think that explains a lot of the reason that the custodial supply line in particular is so high. We, over the past two years, there have been proposed increases in those lines as well. I think, you know, so while it's a big jump this year, it is a trend that we've seen and we've tried to address in the last couple of budgets. But also, during this time of COVID, there was a lot of stockpiling that we were doing of a lot of these materials. So it's been kind of tough to trend what we actually need. And those stockpiles, at this point, you know, were, those are gone. We don't have the stockpiles anymore, so we're back to kind of that monthly purchase, and it's a little easier to trend. So what is budgeted there is based on what we're actually spending.
And this is a trend for all school districts and all school systems, though this is not unique to us?
No, not unique to us. And last year in particular, we went out price shopping on a lot of those things and ended up settling on a correct consortium pricing on those items, which reduced some costs for us a little bit. But when you're talking about a 5% reduction over our previous vendor, but the price in general has escalated, you know, 110%, then obviously, it's only a drop in the bucket.
And Brian, this isn't charmed, by the way. This is the...
Have you guys been to Costco?
You talking about it's one ply, not three ply?
It's one ply.
Any unfunded mandates in there from the state?
I was thinking, in the supplies area.
All right. Patty, you have any questions?
Yeah, the...
Yeah, the I think Matt's there. The technology line, could you provide some more explanation on the changes there?
So the majority of the increase in the technology is the restoration of Esser funds. We moved some things back on the Esser that we had proposed last year to take off of Esser in that same approach of we had one time costs during COVID that where we were bringing in new software. Every year we go through a process of reviewing the software that we're using that supports the curriculum. Some things come off, some things stick. My goal over the three years of Esser was to phase that out and keep the stuff and move it to operating. Last year, the goal was to complete that process and given the the unique circumstances, we put stuff back on to Esser. So it's coming back down to operate for programs that that we have decided we've deemed useful to support our curriculum. At the same time, we also made reductions in terms of pulling software out of our portfolio. But in the end, it's still it still balances out into a a net growth.
Anything else, Patty?
Thank you. Nope, thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah, can you kind of just give a similar explanation? I'm sure it's probably similar, but for the instructional supplies, it's that's a over seventy thousand dollars increase, page sixty seven.
You said sixty seven?
Yeah.
So we're looking at, you know, I think there that was an area that we cut pretty significantly last year as well. In addition to the escalating costs that we're seeing, you know, along the same lines of of paper goods. Paper in in general is is a great example of 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 an item that is just astronomically more expensive than it than it had been in the past.
And is that something else that you kind of worked to buy in bulk or with groups to reduce rates and prices?
Exactly. Actually, I was just talking to our team this morning around, you know, we we do that right now. We've done that with, there's a group in the in the region ERC, which is our region as well. And so we've had lots of conversations around that. This is another one that we're going to go back out to again and and see if there's anybody else that's doing better than what we're doing now. But yes.
You good? All right. Page seventy five for the gasoline. Is that piggybacked with the buses or is their price wasn't built into that four million change?
That that's that's right align in alignment with the bus cost, yes.
And for the future too, obviously, is that an overage also in case of the future vans come online and such?
Uh, no, because we're gonna we're gonna have a cap for for that, but that's that's what we estimate as an additional cost. You know, I don't, you know, I don't know that that additional vans would would drive that significantly higher. But that is that is the additional cost of what of what we will have to pay next year as a part of our contract.
Thank you. Keith?
I have a potentially future problem question. And working with libraries, I know that as they've gone to lending more digital books, there's a significant expense with the licensing fees with those digital books. And I'm sure that we are going much more digital as we should. Is that a driver in this budget or do we just foresee it as a driver in the future?
Overall, I think we've made some pretty significant shifts just in the past ten years. I I think there are annual increases that we see because it is a subscription based model.
Yeah.
The library media specialists have done a lot to work with consortiums. We just signed up again with the Connecticut Library Consortium, which provides us with some additional discounts. I mean, there's a small membership fee that's involved with that.
Yeah.
We do, we work closely with the public library as well in in areas where we can collaborate with them. In a lot of cases, that's not possible. It's either K-POP licensing or public library licensing. But I think we've seen, we've probably seen a good share of the shift. And now what we're seeing is the ongoing subscription cost.
Yeah.
What what's happened post pandemic is a lot of technology related companies have increased their annual increases. I mean, in the past two years, I've seen our annual subscriptions go from a three, a standard three percent increase to anywhere from five to eight.
Yeah.
And some will try to come in higher and and you gotta kind of negotiate with them. No, we can't afford to do that. But on the lot, the digitization of the library of library books, we've kind of, I think we've kind of hit the plateau now. We're just seeing those annual increases. And a lot of our students, we we saw this even when we did try, we've gone digital in some areas and we've pulled back because the students prefer paper.
Yeah.
They prefer the physical book as well.
But it's it's because I know textbooks were for years and probably still are, you know, tremendous expense. But so we're not, you just you don't say, some people just think, well, you go digitally, you're gonna save a bunch of money. But it's just not the case because where they get referred for digital. My other question is, I also know from the library, they can't. So Farmington Library can't work in conjunction with other town libraries to negotiate a better price on those licenses. Is that same with schools? Are you guys kind of on an island? You're not able to talk about what price you get versus what, you know, a neighboring school might get?
It depends. So that's that's where our subscribing or being members of the Connecticut Library Consortium gives us some of that power. And that there are other contract vehicles throughout the state that that allow the same thing. It it it's kind of more of a case by case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Amy?
All my questions have been answered already.
All right. Dave?
Yeah, I think it's a minor thing, but the student activity and athletic supplies, you know, it's an increase of five point nine six change. I was just curious, obviously, I'm assuming just like, you know, you have the summary there. Game day officials, their fee, their daily fee is definitely going up.
Yeah, I actually wasn't on that page and in my head I was going, I think that's the officials that are driving that. And then, thank you, yes, that is a that's for CIAC interscholastic athletics, the the cost of officiating game. So it's game day costs and operations, but a large driver of that is officials' fees.
Anything else from anybody?
Yeah, Joe, I've got one other.
Go ahead.
I know that there's been a question, the legislation on the right to read and the changing curriculum requirements for reading. Is that gonna is is that it? Are there costs associated with that for the district? Are they incorporated in this budget? Are we waiting to see what happens?
I'll start and then I'll let then I'll let Kim Kim jump in. That's a great question. You know, there are districts that are on the hook for hundreds and hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars for for this cost. So that would be a good example of unfunded mandate. I will, I don't have a complete answer. It's an it's an it's depend, it depends. We were actually discussing it earlier in the week. We meet, we meet on a regular basis to review all of our grant funds and expenditures, including Esser, to make sure that our budget is in line. So any grant that we receive, we actually call it grant review. We review all of our grant funds at one time. We did receive, as did many, I think every town, we received just shy of two hundred thousand dollars of 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 grant funding in in Connecticut. We also, part of the the one of the programs mandated through or suggested through right to read, we had already invested in through Esser one time funding prior to the legislation coming through. So we hopefully have strategically navigated that to to not have that half a million to million dollar cost associated with our district. Kim, I don't know if you have anything else to add, but that's really, that's the latest position as of Monday this week when we were discussing where that was going.
Right, absolutely. We're still in the process of reviewing programming, but we feel really good about the new programs that we've added thus far using Esser funding. And there is a strong possibility of selecting a particular program and using the digital parts of the program, maybe spending money on the books for the students, but not needing to make this massive investment in terms of teacher manuals and all of that. So we're really looking closely at each of the programs that are proposed for districts. But at this point, our Director of Curriculum feels like the sort of the biggest cost has been accomplished, if you will. So I think we're in good shape right now.
Is it all set, Patty?
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Next series, please.
All right. The fifth object is equipment, which accounts for about one percent of the total budget. And the increase in the equipment line is six point three eight percent overall. Are there any questions as it relates to equipment?
Brian, do you have anything?
Just a question on the Chromebooks, which I see in the high school and I see in Westwoods. I don't see them at Irving Robbins.
So that aligns, we do a Chromebook refresh at the K four level. We do a refa refresh each year for students that move from grade four to grade five, which is why you see it in the Westwoods. I allocate it there. And then I also do a refresh of eighth grade students going up to ninth grade, which is why it's in the high school. So it's it lives in the grade level in which they're entering. And then there are some smaller buckets in there in the the K four schools as well because we do, we do refreshes in the like the the grade one, grade two area.
Okay, that was going on the other question. Did we move these things around so all the students can use them?
We do.
Excellent.
How do those Chromebooks look after fourth through eighth grade?
That's why it's a four year refresh.
Rough four years.
Which is consistent with with what we see in terms of performance and and what the students need to do is that by the fourth year, the Chromebooks are running a little slower and in terms of what the the processor needs are.
Yeah.
It it's, I think we've we've kind of hit that sweet spot.
I can keep a tablet screen for four months, I'll take it.
Patty, you have anything?
With respect to the equipment for the high school, I most of it I see is Chromebooks, which is what Brian just asked. But the other items are any of them related to new programming as a result of there being the new high school or Spire, Capstone? Or are they replacement of existing?
I don't see any that are new programming. It might be enhancements to current programming.
Most of that's covered through the project, like the cul- the culinary is covered through the project.
It's all in the project. The culinary costs would be in the project.
Thank you. I don't have anything else.
All right, Sarah?
I just had a quick question about the Chromebooks. Are we, where where are we now in terms of the how they're used in like kindergarten and first grade? And I I know just in my own personal experience, I don't think my daughter had one in kindergarten. But now in first grade, they keep them in the classroom and they're not taking them home, which I prefer, quite frankly. But does that change the use of life? Do they share them? How how is that working out?
So at our, we've made a couple of shifts based on working with teachers. At in our kindergarten classrooms, there are approximately ten devices that are shared amongst the students. They are not used on a regular basis. It's for specific activities. Grades one and two are actually now cart based in the classroom. The students don't take them home on a regular basis. There may be certain projects for grade two where they may take them home on a weekend or to work on, work on something that's school related. We don't see, similar to when we started to make the shift from cart based district wide to take home, we don't see a big difference in terms of the lifespan because the younger students tend to be harder on the devices in the classroom just as much. I I'm, again, we just kind of, we just made that shift back. So we've got different devices. We've the model that we've settled on is supposed to be more durable. We're only a year into that. So to really project out, I would say, based on past experience, we're not going to see much of a decrease in demand for the number of devices each year. It's just a matter of they're staying in the classroom first versus going home every night. Once you get to that third grade level, not only is there more dependency on the Chromebook on a daily basis, but that's where we're also getting into the students being comfortable using the device that they'll be using for their assessments on a regular basis as well.
Thank you.
Keith?
Nothing.
Amy?
Nothing.
Dave?
Yeah, I think Patty asked about the Farmington High School equipment. And so I was just, that was kind of where I was focused on. Just curious, under the science, I had on the biomedical science equipment, if for some reason that that was eliminated is, would that impact like the new building and in building out labs or anything like that?
Project Lead the Way.
Oh, it's Project Lead the Way?
I believe that that's a quote that they specified. That's something that they're.
I think, you know, when we are looking at reductions, we try to keep them as far away from students. So I'd probably not go to a place where, you know, equipment is being used by students. We typically try to keep it as far away as possible from our our students so they're not impacted by any reductions to the greatest extent possible.
Right. But that's that is part of a an ongoing shift in the department where they're continuing to try to find different pathways for students as they're navigating through high school. So there's very strong engineering, computer science pathway. And with the new high school, there's the opportunity in some of the rooms to move into this kind of health, you know, this this healthcare pathway as well, which is really vibrant when we're thinking about the choices our kids are making, especially with what's right here in our backyard of Farmington in terms of healthcare and research, so.
Right. That was, you know, that was a small question, but and I think I think your answer was very, you know, insightful that there's these trends, right? And we want to take advantage of these trends and we want to make sure we're blending what we have currently with what we see in front of us. And we want to make sure we augment that to its greatest capability. Makes sense.
Anybody else? We're rolling on.
Okay. So the final object is dues and fees, which accounts for point three seven percent of the total budget. There is a seven, you know, a little over a seven percent, seven point oh three percent increase. This this object accounts for memberships to professional organization. You know, I, there may be questions, but the greatest driver of this is a contracted, we're, you know, we're partners with the town of Farmington as well for our liability auto and property insurance. So in in this mostly is driven by an increase contractual obligation and increase in that.
Brian, you have anything?
I know, it's all good.
Patty?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Keith?
Oh, thank you.
Amy?
No.
Dave?
I'm good.
Oh, you zipped right through that one without a problem. Is there any other questions anybody would like to ask that you thought of now from past sections or series?
I actually did. I just thought it'd be, I we skipped it in services or I skipped it. I thought it'd just be helpful to explain so that people understand kind of how that, I forget which page it is, but it's private tuition. And I think it's going up like two hundred something dollars and just to understand what the drivers of that cost is.
Fifty nine and sixty one, I think.
And I don't think we spoke to that, did we?
So, you know, everything that we share is based on zero based budgeting. So it's likely when you look at our financials, like we're, we've overspent that and that. I think it's at fifty fifty nine is fifty nine is public and
Yeah, fifty nine, sixty, sixty one.
So just just the difference between those, you know, you know, for example, the money doesn't come directly back into the district. It's a self sustaining program. But I'll give you an example of a public, a public tuition that Farmington receives. Not, again, it's it's in its own self sustaining account. But we, along with Sims Berry Public Schools, run a program called the Farmington Valley Transition Academy. These are for our students who continue education through age twenty two. That program is currently housed in Bloomfield. It's been in West Hartford prior. We're hoping to have a move in the near future, closer closer to the district in Avon. But that is a wonderful program. So our students who would be a part of that program from Farmington, Sims Berry students who would be a part of that program through age twenty two. And then off the top of my head, I want to say nine additional districts right now have partnered. So that's a public, we run that as a public school district, right? We we share that cost jointly with Sims Berry. And then districts that choose to also apply and enroll their students in that pay tuition for their students to attend that program. So if we were not part of the group running that and we were having students attend that program, we would be paying, that would come out of our public tuition account. So there are many districts, there are other districts we we have from time to time, although not anymore. We've had a couple of students who might tuition into one of our specialized programs. But that's not our main, our main operation is for Farmington students. But there are other districts across the state who operate programs that But there are other districts across the state who operate programs that have students attend. Our magnet schools would be another example, you know, of a public tuition. So students who are not, who are outplaced and attending a program that is run by a public district would be in the public tuition line. Uh, and then there are many programs as well that are offered throughout the state that are privately run. So that's the delineation between the two. But the driver is really whether or not we have, uh, we have students who have mandated IEP, um, you know, recommendations from the team, um, that, that has them attending another school. And so the projected cost right now is based on what we know at the time of students who would be attending um, either a public or private tuition program.
And then uh, that amount, if you look at the description, uh, we've already reduced it. It's actually a, a much higher amount, but we reduce it by uh, what we anticipate getting in excess cost. So any student whose services cost more than four and a half times our per pupil expenditure, uh, the state would pick up that cost. Unfortunately, um, they're supposed to pick up a hundred percent of the cost. Uh, they typically will pick up about, um, what is it, seventy, sixty-five percent of the cost above four and a half times our per pupil. Uh, we wish that it would be fully funded as it was originally promised, that students that, you know, because of the services they need, uh, it cost us more than four and a half times. So anything over four and a half times, we submit to the state and then they reimburse us about seventy, sometimes sixty-five percent, sometimes seventy percent of the, those costs. So we already reduce our budget by that. Um, so we anticipate, okay, these are the students that would cost over that amount. This is how much over, and so we're estimating, and then we reduce, we underfund our budget because we anticipate grant funding. I will say that it, it is something that's a moving target for the state of Connecticut. It is underfunded right now, so many districts who thought they were going to get a certain percentage this year were surprised. And they budgeted for a certain percentage. They were surprised to get far less. So they're um, really struggling with their budgets this year because of that. Uh, we, you know, we anticipated, we're very careful and thoughtful about how we, we do this. And so I think we're getting a little less than what we anticipated, but not the significant amount that other districts are facing. So there is some grant funding that offsets this account. And any other area, could be transportation too, that we apply excess costs to, to reduce. And we do that now. So our budget is underfunded because we anticipate the excess cost grant money coming in.
So, so you're saying, so if a student needs to have that van, you can submit the bill to the state and try to get a reimbursement for that cost?
You know, it's a lot, I have to say. It's a lot of documentation and very careful uh, analysis of every student. Um, that, you know, is to ensure that we're uh, accessing excess cost to the greatest extent possible. So we have to keep track of every cost. And then calculate, uh, okay, so, you know, this is a student who's over the four and a half times, and then we submit that to the state and receive funding back. It could be the combination of an outplacement, tuition, paraprofessional. You know, you just add any cost associated with the services the child requires.
In your build with that budget though, then you anticipate not getting the one hundred percent after four and a half times?
We
You guys, it's because you historically have seen that. So you have to plan on the state not kind of holding up their end?
Where, they, they do it based on, you know, different factors of a town, of how much the town is going to
So it's, it's one of those, yeah, it's the
So, so we are, you know, we typically estimate between sixty and sixty-five percent because that's rather safe. Um, and, and, you know, again, this year, the, the, you know, the districts across the state were anticipating a large, so many districts budgeted with an assumption that they were getting much more money. That is not happening. We did not do that because we understand this is a, a volatile and often not fully funded, never fully funded, uh, ever yet.
Because that's why they would tell us that as a town, we're a victim of our own success type of thing?
It, that happens in a lot of areas with grant funding. This is one of them. Um, there's a tiered system in place where depending on the health of your town, you receive different tiers of percentage. So some districts get eighty percent. You know, we tend to get that sixty-five to seventy percent. Um, because we're at a tier that, you know, gets a lower percentage reimbursement.
Gotcha.
But, but you know, I, I do think it's really worth noting that this is highly unpredictable and highly volatile. And we are happy and thrilled to educate all the wonderful students that come to Farmington. But um, you know, I, I get phone calls on a weekly basis around trends and shifts that are changing. You know, if um, residents move in who are receiving service, you know, this upwards to the tune of millions of dollars, that, that shift, um, just, just shift without, without prediction. And that happens all the time.
That's why part of this is important, is the education of that. Because I don't think, you know, I think there's many residents that don't understand that giant cost. And then because we do such a good job in town, we then are kind of like a, a bullseye for like, well, that would be a great place for us to live because these services are there. So um, I appreciate that explanation.
And just to piggyback off that one, I know the aides um, section is such a high number. Do, does an aide have to have particular skillset in order to be an aide with their, one-on-one with these children? Or are you just able to hire anybody? Do they have CPR, EMT, do they have to come in, you know, some phlebotomist, whatever, because of special trachea cleanings?
So, yes, so you can see that when you look at our budget and our, and our monthly financials, like nursing services is uh, another area where we're overspending, uh, you know. Every student gets their individualized needs met, and so depending on those needs, uh, and, you know, there, there are requisite skills that are required to be out, to apply and be hired to be a parent educator for the Farmington Public Schools. So uh, educational level and/or the passing of uh, what's called a parent pro assessment. So those would be skills, uh, the basic skills required to serve in that capacity. And then depending on the needs of the students being serviced, as I mentioned before, we have, um, which, you know, uh, Councilman Vibber also mentioned, which is attractive to, to many residents or folks to move into the community. We have wonderful programs that are offered for our students in district. And so we're able to service and support many students that other districts might, might not be able to because that's a part of what we want to do as educators is, is meet the needs of all of our students to the best possibility. But um, with that requires specific training and skillset depending on student needs for various programs within the district.
And that, you know, we take on a lot of the responsibility for that training. Um, we've actually added a day uh, to our para- para-professionals' work year just for uh, professional development. We also utilize when we have the early release professional development days. It's a gift for our para-professionals because many para-professionals in other districts are just not getting the time they need for that additional training. And we're able to do that through our early release professional development days. That's part of their workday. Um, so we're able to provide that training. But we take on that responsibility of the training that's required, whether they're with an individual child and that individual child's needs, or, you know, they could be an instructional para-professional. We want to ensure that they have all the training they need. And we're very fortunate. We have excellent para-professionals. And, um, and I, I do think that part of that is that we have a commitment to capacity building for every member of the school district.
I hate to bring it up further, but does it sometimes require the aide to go on to the transportation too with them to go to and from home? Or are these, or is that?
We, we do have that. Uh, typ- you know, the other, um, you know, all bus and transportation vendors also have, it's in our contract. There, I, I can't recall off the top of my head. It's uh, but there's a fee, there's also a, a cost for a monitor. You could hire a monitor through the transportation company. Uh, there are times where, where either nurses uh, that are employed through us or um, or paras who are employed through us will also um, be as a part of their, as a part of their responsibility behind that transportation as well.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question on natural gas and electricity. And then we're going from tuition now to whether it be sand or Scott. But with the new Farmington High School, I understand, you know, we'll have better efficiencies and so forth. And so obviously our demand side should be, you know, a lot, a lot tighter and, you know, more economical. The question is, in the, in the design of the high school and in onboarding it, has there been an incentive program from Eversource to rebate dollars? I mean, I know I've completed multiple public buildings and I've, I've garnered significant, significant checks at the end of the, at the end of the job, the rebate program.
Yeah. So in addition to the Connecticut High Performance Building Standards, which is every Connecticut State um, school project, um, we did work uh, with Eversource for uh, for basically the point, the points that, that we got with the design of the building. We did get some money back to the project uh, with an Eversource program there. Um, in this budget, as we looked at the electricity and the natural gas, we did work with uh, the projections that we were getting from, from the engineers for the project, for what they anticipated for MMB to use for natural gas and for the kilowatt hours for uh, the electricity as well. Um, when you're talking about the efficiency, it's actually, it's signi- it should be a significant reduction on the natural gas that we're using because of how, how much more well-insulated the building is and how much more efficient the equipment is. On the electricity side,
Yeah.
I don't think you're, you're, you're not likely to see as much of a, a reduction in the kilowatt hours that we're using because there's so much more equipment, more air handling equipment and everything else throughout the building. Um, but that was all incorporated. Based on the reduction in, in, in those amounts, that was incorporated in what we put forward for the budget.
And we also, we entered, you know, we have a, entered an energy service agreement. Uh, I would say whenever possible, we look to partner with the town of Farmington to, to reduce costs. So we share the same energy service uh, partner there. We do the same with, we just enter, we're about to enter an RFP for, for our health insurance consultation. We did it with um, with uh, rubbish and waste last year. So whenever we can, we work with, with, with Joe Swecki in the, in the finance department or the town engineer to try to come up with ways to, to experience cost savings collectively.
I think that's, you know, Scott was talking earlier about our relationship with the police department. And I would say it's the same with the town manager and town departments. We work very collaboratively together. It really benefits the taxpayers of Farmington quite a bit. Um, again, what Scott was saying about police departments, a lot of times you don't see boards of ed, um, offices and, you know, central office and a town working as collaboratively as we do. So we, we're very fortunate, um, because we're all committed, you know, to trying to provide excellence in what we do, but also trying to collaborate to reduce costs as much as possible.
Anybody else?
Joe?
Go ahead, Patty.
Thanks. Um, Kathy, you talked about the ECF grants, but I know another question that gets asked a lot is um, the, how open choice impacts our spending and our revenue. Uh, could you provide a little more information on the open choice program?
Yeah, there, there is an, in the Q and A, uh, there is information about open choice. Um, so just
Which she doesn't have.
We are a really proud founding district of open choice. It used to be called Project Concern, not a great name for it. Um, but two superintendents ago, uh, really that, um, Bill Strike was a part of the architect of that program. And so we have had um, over fifty years of welcoming students um, from Hartford to Farmington. And uh, it's just, you know, really a point of pride for us. Um, so in the Q and A, is it on what page? Oh, yes. Yep. Uh, so page twenty-eight talks about the different tiers of funding for open choice. Um, depending on the percentage of students you take uh, from Hartford. And Hartford, Crac runs a lottery in which uh, indivi- individuals from Hartford can apply uh, to the open choice program or magnet program. And our students here in Farmington can uh, you know, apply for a magnet uh, program as well. So you can see the different tiers of funding for each uh, percentage. We typically are at around a three percent. We're below that this year. Uh, we've had some challenges, I think, since the pandemic. It's just been hard for families to commit to being too far away uh, from their home when it comes to their child's education. Uh, but typically we are at a three percent, receiving around six thousand uh, per student. What uh, I think we want, I, I would want to uh, stress to uh, all of you in our community is, we'll hear, well, six thousand, you know, our per pupil is so much higher. Um, part of the policy of the board is I do not add students uh, that would to uh, a particular grade level that would impact another teacher. So it's current teachers. And then um, say I have, you know, sixteen students in a classroom, we'll add a student to that classroom. So we stay within our FTE that we have, so there's not an impact on additional staffing. Uh, also, we do not pay transportation for uh, open choice students. That's covered at the state level. We also do not pay um, any special services cost, which is, you know, often a large part of our overall tuition per pupil. Um, uh, it's spread across everyone, but you know, that, not having to uh, pay for those special services, we build Hartford back for those uh, those services that we're providing. But then we receive funding back from Hartford. So if a student requires a para-professional, for instance, that para-professional is paid by the Hartford Public Schools, not by the Farmington Public Schools. Uh, those para-professionals are not part of our pension either. They are hired outside of our school district through Crac. So we didn't want to um, impact pension uh, cost either. So very separate uh, when it comes to that. We also, so we, we um, utilize these dollars, these tuition dollars that we receive to pay our magnet tuition. So uh, the taxpayers of Farmington do not have to pay for students leaving our school district to magnets because we do have to pay tuition for that. And we also have to pay the special education costs uh, of our students who uh, go to magnet schools. So uh, typically, you know, depending on how many students in a particular year that we have at Magnus, we utilize this tuition money to pay for those tuition costs. So it's like, we receive tuition money and then we send it back out uh, to various uh, magnet school like Crac and Learn and other groups that provide magnet schools uh, to Farmington uh, as options. Uh, we, we also utilize that money typically for um, some staffing, but not a lot of staffing positions. And we um, try to uh, focus on one-time costs for uh, the tuition uh, costs that are above magnet tuition and staffing costs because we know that it's soft money that could go away um, because we might have a lower percentage of open choice students, which we have this year. Uh, so we, you know, are not going to get the full, what we typically get when it comes to tuition uh, for open choice. We also um, have some tiered incentives um, that uh, is, are provided when it comes to um, open choice. And that uh, again, is a lot of enhancement for all students in Farmington. Those uh, particular grants that we receive. Very interestingly, we will get uh, some reimbursement for our high school project because we have open choice students in our high school. So depending on the percentage we have, at the time this project is, is completed, we will get funding back because of having those open choice students in our high school. So you can read through all of the information related to open choice um, here. And, and that's why we put it on our website. We want to be really transparent about the program. And um, it's a benefit uh, to our students here in Farmington. It's a benefit to the students who uh, come to us. They are Farmington students. They might travel from Hartford, but they're, they're Farmington students, so.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
One last, staffing, a hundred percent, ninety percent, how are we looking?
In terms of jobs uh, currently available, I, I think you, we've seen some, um, we've seen some transition in our, in our para-staffing has been, been a little volatile. So um, we're not fully staffed there, although we are, you know, sometimes we'll, we'll even contract while we're, while we're attempting to fill those positions. I think certified staffing, we're, we're rate at a hundred percent.
All right. And any unfunded drivers, I mean mandates that are causing some of these things that we haven't discussed? Or you brought to our attention that we passed over with this book that we're just didn't catch our eye?
So there are many, many unfunded mandates, probably more than um, we've typically seen over the last seven years or so where it's a pretty significant shift uh, from the state level to school, local school districts. Um, I will ask everyone to help me with this because there are, are many, um, you know, the right to read was an example of that. Um, you now have to change your K three, pre-K or K three programming. And you can only buy these programs and And, you know, luckily, our literacy programming is really stellar, and so we made a few shifts. It didn't have as much as of an impact on us that it has had on other school districts. We, recently, there was a shift from the state providing services to students who needed those services at 22 years old. It shifted to us, so we, our transition program that Scott was talking about was an 18 to 21-year-old program. Now it's an 18 to 22-year-old program. So those students stay with us until they're turning 23 now. Again, you know, all, I always say, you know, there are many mandates, and they're really well-intentioned. It's just that it doesn't come with any funding, and that's where the challenge is for us because these things can be, we could have had our referendum, and then we get a list of new mandates that cost quite a bit of money, and we didn't budget for those. In the past, they would always wait a year so that we could fund it, and we would have another budget cycle to then fund it. And that has been something that has not been the trend in recent, in recent years. What are some other ones you can think of?
The HVAC grant, or the, excuse me, the indoor, indoor air quality is one that you see in our capital funding requests right now. We're in an okay position, but there are districts that have $500,000 to $1 million worth of indoor air quality inspections that are going to be required every five years. And so that's a good example of, of a driver. Kim, what else do you have?
There are courses mandated at the high school that must be taught. So coming on board soon is a mandate for, that all students take a financial literacy course. We've had other courses in, in the same way be mandated by the state, and we need staffing to teach those courses. The state used to provide funding for beginning educators who must complete a series of training modules in order to advance to the next level of certification. They still require that that happen, but they don't fund it, nor do they provide the training themselves. So we now need to figure out how we do that, including supporting beginning teachers with mentors who, you know, receive a stipend. In general, professional learning, every year we have new topics and titles that are expected of us with, you know, one of them being a two-hour training. So, you know, we use a platform now that's been so helpful in keeping track to be sure that if it's required that you complete this training, then this platform will keep that data for us so that we know who's completed it. And some trainings are required every year and some every three years, and some are 20 minutes and some are two hours. And so it's a lot of documenting and, and finding the actual, you know, training to be done. So it, that is a growing list of topics that they're expecting all teachers to participate in.
And that system is costly.
Yeah, the system costly.
It wasn't a, a system we had in the past, but it became so overwhelming for us to keep track that we had to purchase a system just for that, those mandates. And again, you know, no recognition that this is a lot of staff time, which is costly. Any time we have to pull individuals away from students, it can be very costly for us. But then the system itself, for trying to manage such a large number of mandated trainings for public school teachers, paraprofessionals, some it's every staff member in the district, every consultant group, everyone has to have certain trainings in certain number of years, and that we have to keep it up. You could have a whole department just trying to manage it. And, you know, if it's difficult for us, I think in the larger cities, it must just be completely overwhelming. But I already know we have additional ones that are being proposed right now in the legislative session. So it's, 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 there's a, a focus on public schools when it comes to unfunded mandates.
If you think about it, you know, we have, we've had such teacher turnover in the last five, six, seven years, and as the more experienced and seasoned teachers retire, you're thinking you're going to get these savings with new teachers coming in at lower levels, right? But then you add this additional financial cost. So what you were hoping would be a chance maybe to kind of reset some of the salary lines, you know, across district, it's impacted by the fact that these mandates require us to spend all this extra time, money, and energy and effort. And that therefore, you know, drags the budget into a place we don't, you know, we wouldn't necessarily want it to go.
Thank you. Last call for questions from anybody? Patty?
Yeah, thanks, Joe. So we've talked about the SIR grants already and COVID, and I know that the SIR grants were designed for, to address the impacts of COVID. And I'm making an assumption that just because the grants are going away, there's still long-term impacts that the schools still need to address that are related to COVID. Can you either confirm, confirm I'm right and explain, or provide other information?
No, I think that's, I think that's an ongoing, an ongoing challenge and opportunity for us to continue to support our students' academic, social, emotional, mental health needs. You know, Patty, I think that's, I think that's very clear, and that's what you see on the news and in the media quite often. I also, you know, going back to, you know, hate to belabor the supplies issue, but like, COVID created an entire new set of just supplies that are expected in, in a school building. I mean, the, the amount of hand sanitizing stations and dispensers that are, that are in a building, that came about during COVID, and that's become an expectation and a norm across buildings, right? So I, you know, I know that's maybe not where you saw the question going as well, but I think it's, it's worth noting that there's costs for hand sanitizer, there's costs for the machines, there's costs for the batteries to, to run each of those machines, and that's in every building across. It's in the town hall as well, right? You're going to see these types of things that have just now become normative practice in buildings, but those are, those are costs that aren't going away. But I think we continue to focus on what our students need and adapt accordingly. And, and with that, you know, I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's without question that, that we're responding to, to the effects of the last five years when we're, when we're doing some of those things.
I just want to add, I heard a comment about how we were almost five years post-pandemic, and it's in the rearview mirror. Those kids that were in first grade or in kindergarten in 2020 are now at Westwoods or at IAR. So the impacts that those children had with, with, to a social wellness, social emotional development, those are still being, we're still seeing the impacts and behaviors and, and all the other things that I think each of us might have known anecdotally from what we hear, you know, what's happening at Westwoods and IAR. So I think it's, it's, it's inaccurate to suggest that the impacts of COVID are in the rearview mirror, and that we're going to be dealing with this cohort of students for at least another five or six years.
You know, our, our FTE increases are driven a lot by student need and special services in particular. So when you look at requests that we've had, a lot of them have been in the area of mental health. We do benchmark ourselves against other districts, and we want to make sure that, you know, we have adequate staffing for our students' mental health needs and IEP hours that they require. So, you know, additional social workers, additional psychologists, additional paraprofessionals, those are all outcomes, you know, I believe, from a time where students were not in school and experiencing what they are now experiencing. You know, every day they're in school now, I, I'm, I'm thrilled because it was a significant impact on our students, and it remains an impact on our students. And we see it each day in the ways that, you know, it can be the behaviors were. We're seeing a lack of regulating emotions, but also students that have to catch up. They are still, you know, in that place where they're needing additional tutoring, additional support to get to where they need to be. It, I think we can all agree that it had an impact on each one of us, but on a five-year-old or a six-year-old, that's compounded. So, yeah, we're still seeing that.
More students, school avoidance, so chronic absenteeism is a significant issue that we didn't see at the same levels prior.
Right.
So, you know, we're trying to find those, like the social worker that I talked about, to help outreach to families and support a student feeling comfortable coming back to school.
Great. Again, thank you again. So when we started out this process, you know, we asked the town to come in at 2.8. We asked the BOE to try to come in at 3.2. What's the lowest you can go that won't significantly impact personnel or programs at the schools?
So it, it is challenging because we tried to come in, and I know a 597 feels like extraordinary. It's extraordinary, extraordinary for me. I haven't, you know, brought forth a, a budget like this. And we went through so many iterations of just trying to get to, or, you know, a bare bones as much as possible budget, but not a budget where I need to come to you in the middle of next year because we underfunded to a point that would be irresponsible. So trying to be, you know, responsible and try to bring to the board, town council, our community, a budget where we are maintaining the programs. I think I mentioned earlier that self-insurance does give us a unique opportunity this year that is needed. I don't typically go to that reserve because of the volatility of self-insurance, being self-insured. We take on the benefits of self-insurance when there's good years, and we take on the risk in bad years. And being here 15 years, I've seen the ebb and flow of how that plays out, where we'll have a few years of great claim trends, and then we'll have, you know, some catastrophic claims that we really now have to make up for, you know, and, and there's a big budget increase in, in health insurance. We're seeing around us big increases in health insurance. We're very fortunate that in this budget for self-insurance, there's $150,000 increase. That's minimal compared to, you know, the majority of, of school districts and even municipalities. But we also, along with positive claim trends, we also have a very healthy reserve. So I would say that we would have to go to that for the majority of any reductions because other than that, when I look at where we would be, we could certainly go back to the places that I typically go to, even though it pains me to go to these areas like curriculum and professional development, supplies, major projects, Chromebooks, natural gas. I think natural gas, there's a little bit of an opportu, it's not that much, but around $8,000 that the, after, you know, as we put this budget together where at one point in the year, and then the market kind of reveals itself, and we could save a little bit, 8,000 in, in natural gas. But those areas, teacher turnover, I would take more out of teacher turnover. I believe we did 200,000 or originally, we'll have to, I'll have to look at this. But so teacher turnover, just to explain it to everyone, is we always, so when we have retirements, if they're not a shortage area, because shortage areas typically cost what we're spending now on an experienced teacher. It's very hard to find shortage areas, like in special education, school social, school social workers, things like that. They're shortage areas. There's not enough in Connecticut to cover the need. So they, those are typically very experienced teachers coming to the district, and we don't save a lot. But in an elementary position, we actually reduce, so we will have an amount, the teacher costs this year, but we reduce that to a lower level because we know we're going to hire someone for less. Those are our knowns because we know who's retiring. But every summer, there is turnover, and we anticipate some savings in turnover. Does it always work out that we have savings in turnover? No, but we still reduce our budget. We underfund our budget by about 200,000 a year. What, one, so we did 150 this year because this, this current year, we didn't have, the turnover, it wasn't like we saved a lot. So we went with 150, but we are, I would reduce that by, I mean, I would take another 50,000, so we would have teacher turnover at a $200,000 level. I would also look at eliminating the end-user position that we had proposed. That would, it would be our second year of cutting that position. We would also look at reducing potentially our security, so the security and residency, there's two positions there. We would most likely have them start in January instead of July 1, which is a cost savings. But then we would ramp up for the '25, '26 school year to then fully have that, a functional department and, but it would give us, like from January of '25 until July 1, to kind of get everything in place. So, you know, and, but the self, and, and we also would look at an elementary, potentially an elementary teacher position, but that depends on how much we take out of self-insurance. So we have talked to Joe Swetki, and, you know, we, we, it's joint, so we're, we don't want to do anything without Joe looking at it, and he's thinking that we could take potentially 500,000 out of the reserve, and then we would zero out the increase as well. And then with those other areas, we would hope to get, we're hoping to get to a 4.75.
All right. Thank you. Obviously, we'll take that into consideration, but obviously to know, for us to get to a 4.75 with a 3.2, we would have to probably significantly cut and reduce your capital project also.
Yes, and we understand that, you know, it's, it's both, our operating and our capital.
And like I said before, and I'm not asking you guys to do something that we're not asking the town to do also, so.
Right.
We're trying to split it down as much as we can evenly for everybody.
Yes, and we've had discussions of areas that we would reduce in capital as well. And we would, you know, prioritize the HVAC and security and the code compliance areas as well as technology. It would, technology would be reduced, but we would, you know, work on those air, those particular, and then not do other areas that we had proposed. So we, we understand, you know, that we bring forth what we, what our students need, what we really need, but we also are always, you know, trying to be partners in this and be responsible and responsive to the taxpayers of Farmington while also being responsible and responsive to our students.
Well, I thank you very much, and we will take this under advisement. I want to thank you, your Board of Ed, your staff, and all the employees of the Farmington Public School System. You've always done a great job for us over the years, and we truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your complete presentation.
You bet. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
We'll wait a second for Kathy and Catherine to join us. You're one shy.
One shy?
Catherine, you better shut it down.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're good.
We're good?
So.
So?
So we don't have anything else on the agenda?
No.
And so we are planning on being here at 4 o'clock tomorrow with our, my department heads, and we'll go from there. We do have just some sandwiches. We do have just some sandwiches for you, and that would be it for tonight, I think.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from anybody? Understand 4 o'clock tomorrow, run through everything, and grab a seat once you get in tomorrow night.
Sounds good.
And then I will call for an adjournment. Keith?
Make a motion to adjourn the March 13, 2024 Town Council Budget Meeting.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Hope you feel better, Patty.
Yeah, feel better, Patty.
Thank you. Good night.